Yeah.
Kennedy.
President.
Longo.
Here.
Nattari.
Here.
Robel.
Here.
Duhmoldr.
President.
Mayor Campbell.
Here.
May I have a motion to go on the private session?
Second.
Go into private. To discuss litigation, negotiation, and personnel.
Councilmember Cosarali.
Yeah.
Kennedy.
President.
Longo. Nattari.
Here.
Robel.
Here.
Duhmoldr.
President.
Mayor Campbell.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, with liberty and justice for all.
The notice that's being given to the president of the public and the board of the public is what? You don't need to press this high button.
Report to the managers.
Yes, since we last met, we had a water main break on Mill Street by the Brownstone Bridge. It was repaired by the Water Department. We are moving ahead with demolition of 60 Garden Avenue. Frank De Lorenzo, our construction officer, is updating the quotations that were previously received because it's in deplorable and dangerous condition, needs to come down. 52 Columbus Avenue, tomorrow we will be removing the fence that's leaning over onto the sidewalk, creating a hazardous condition. DPW will take care of that. As you know and you see on the agenda under new business, we went out to bid and received bids for garbage and recycling. They came back on May 6th. We received only one bid. My recommendation is that we reject that bid immediately. At the next meeting, which will be June 14th, we plan on introducing the 2016 municipal budget. And last but not least, I've contacted PSENG at the request of Councilwoman Burke to upgrade the lighting on Heckle Street. We provided them with all the numbers on all the poles. They'll evaluate them and take the necessary action. Joy out.
Well, we have several houses that have been in foreclosure, taken home by the banks, but the properties are in deplorable condition. What do we do in a case like that?
Usually what happens is we can do a clean and lean, or what I've done in the past is I've contacted the banks directly. If you provide me what the addresses-
I can give you a list.
Yeah, if you give me a list, I'll be happy to track them down and contact the banks.
And that's their obligation to get their cleanup-
Yes.
If they don't, then what happens?
If they don't, then what we can do is we can go in, we can take the necessary actions, and then just put a lien on the property. And then once title changes, we will be reimbursed.
I also know, Marla, that you and I are working on that town-
One of the one things, I don't think the mic's on.
You and I-
Oh, man. Wow. Hey, look at the words.
You and I are working on that townwide yard sale, maybe for, on the 14th, you can give us some information on that.
Yes.
And how we're going to do that. And just one more thing, Michael Sheldon may be able to answer this during the public session, but the online property taxes, I think May 1st was really the first time the whole thing was in effect. I was just curious, was it highly utilized? I don't know, Michael, if you have a number on that or-
Approximately 1,000. Approximately 1,000 people.
I don't know, would that be considered good? I don't know.
I was hoping for a bit more, but it's the first time out, so I don't have a number.
Very good. And that was a lot of progress. And I thank you, Marla, for that, and you too, Michael.
Good job, Michael.
Thank you.
Marla, I was just wondering if we have any status on the page of Franklin Avenue?
Yeah, we did have a schedule. I don't have it in front of me. I did report on that, but I'll resurrect that and get an answer on that.
Thank you.
And I'll present the dates at the next meeting.
Second, Marla. Communications.
A notification received from the county of Essex Department of Health and Rehabilitation. Division of Community Health Services stating the township has been selected to receive funding from the 2016 municipal mining grant program in the amount of $35,000. The 2015 annual report received from the townships of Bellevue, Zoning Board of Adjustment. Request received from the Grace Baptist Church of Bellevue to conduct a block party on Saturday, August 27th on Green March Street.
May I have a motion to approve it?
Councilmember Cosarali.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Longo.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Duhmoldr.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell. The invitation received to Bellevue Nutley Disabled American Veterans to attend the annual Bellevue Memorial Day Observies. Services begin at Wendell Cemetery at Marne and all are invited to attend. A letter received, mortifying Donider Esquire who represents Kansas City in Sons, which states, "Please reuprise this, as discussed at our informal meeting many weeks ago, where both the Finkels teams as the property owner and the township expressed the desire that the property be expeditiously returned its productive use and as a consequence to the tax rolls as a developed property. We have been unsuccessful despite repeated requests to Meridian Capitania Properties to have them respond to the specific questions raised at the meeting by the township as Sular proposed development. We continue to seek the responses, but as well are actively discussing with others who have expressed an interest in the use of Bellevue. And application received for Cabanas to perform at the July 4th celebration of municipal stadium."
We need a motion. May I have a motion?
Second.
A call.
Councilmember Cosarali.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Longo.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Duhmoldr.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
May I have a fresh introduction?
Order number one for introduction. An ordinance for men revise member ordinances in Council of Bellevue, Chapter 8-16, Handicap Parks and Spaces.
May I have a motion for its introduction?
Second.
A call.
Councilmember Cosarali.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Longo.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Duhmoldr.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
May I have a motion to open up public participation?
Second.
Mayor, before you do that, I'd like to point something out with regard to the agenda. There is an ordinance on the table with regard to the approval of Bellevue's Council on Affordable Housing that was introduced, I think, two meetings ago.
It was just introduced, it wasn't voted.
Pardon me?
It was just introduced. It was just introduced, not voted.
Just wanted to make the record clear.
May I have a motion for public participation?
Second.
Councilmember Cosarali.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Longo.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Duhmoldr.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Jeff Madden, 56 Walnut, Sterling, N. I'd like to first congratulate council members for winning reelection in this last election, Councilwoman Burke and the rest of the men. Congratulations. I'd also like to add that your canceling the last council meeting just before the election was appropriate for covering yourself from any scrutiny to your histories, and that in particular, not responding to the Board of Education students' desire to hold a candidate's form simply shows that, to me, that it's somewhat contemptuous of the educational process here in Bellevue, and that it was cowardly, and that that would have been televised. And that's a real shame because what we've shown the kids is, why bother participating in your civic duty? That really looks pretty bad. Getting back to the H-E-F-S-P, that Councilman Murphy was three days after the election at county court defending the second aspect of the proposal to submit your plan, which does in fact call for zoning changes, as Council Murphy suggested that it didn't. It would include high-density residential in BG and BB zones, which are now industrial and commercial mainly in the valley. And that residential, high-density residential will be added to those zones according to your own submission that you certified as the Darlene Green of Mesa. The idea that the council has elected to consider that litigation when it was administrative action that did not allow us to participate as citizens, but included 31 interested parties of lawyers and developers and council people, related people in the township, that were CC'd in on the entire process, yet we were not allowed to participate. I guess the public's not an interested party. According to what I have read through and can understand, this process is being utilized for the wrong reasons. The whole COA obligation was surrounding townships that were escaping the low and middle income requirements of housing to provide for that segment of the population. We are a low and middle-income township. It was obvious in reading some court responses that doesn't add up what we're trying to do. We don't need further development, least of all 2,000 houses in a flood zone in an environmentally sensitive piece of property that'll invite Capitania. I thank you very much for him being introduced finally, after all the time that he's been haunting our planning board and council. As the developer heir apparent, that seems to be, the Finkles team seemed to be awaiting his reply and desire to develop that as well as other mixed use. Mixed use means like the Rayo de Papalo property on South Washington Avenue, where there's a commercial residential element, 1,200 square feet of commercial and 80 apartments. Is that the idea? Like on East Center Street in Nutley, where we have a small string of apartments and a massive residential enclosure behind it. So it seems to me that this is the exact process that you're going through by utilizing a law that was created to catch scapegoats, and we're utilizing that against a community which is an urban aid community as specified by the state of New Jersey, where our schools in our town receives about a third of our funding because of our low-income population, at-risk people. So it seems to me that this process is being used to your advantage to create a need, a desire for high-density residential development, which is going to strap us, our taxpayers, as we employ seven people in this town that make more than the governor of New Jersey. That's where our money has gone, and that's why we need more money, because we got to feed that animal, which is destroying Bellevue. And a quick fix of residential influx money is going to kill us on the back end, as it has with every other community that's done it. And that's traceable, and there's documented evidence of that online as well. So to utilize this system to harm Bellevue is what it will do. I beg you not to do it. Do not go through with this plan seeking a judge's approval to create almost 2,500 new residential units, for which, on properties that are environmentally terrible to consider, flood zone, high, national infrastructure of electric and gas, high-pressure gas, that kind of blows up petco's, is what's next to that entire length of that property. How much more inappropriate could it be to utilize that property? And quite frankly, if you go ahead and continue down this route, seeking a judge's approval, that will leave us vulnerable to builders remedies, to enforce our own plans of future residential, then it's going to have to be challenged. And maybe beyond Essex County courts, if that becomes necessary.
Finish up, Jeff, please.
Yeah, that's enough.
Thank you.
To follow up with that, I mean, it's so obvious what you're doing here. You're actually creating a scenario to allow builders to sue, builders remedy. In your documentation of anybody, the report from Darlene Green, if you, seven of you bothered to read it, it says, "We have no obligation for..." We have plenty of reportable housing. And I don't even know if they count all the Section 8 housing in Bellevue. So please, we do not need it. But I brought this up before many times before the plaintiff. Star alleged that the losing race to curb property taxes. The towns with the most development had the biggest increase in property taxes. In this one, in 2002, over a short period of time, all the new building that went on in 90s destroyed our property guidance. Our, a set valuation went down 12% in the same period. Our taxes were up 30%. Since that time, our taxes have gone up a little over 100%, just on a municipal level. So as Jeff said, this isn't going to work. It's going to destroy this town as we know it. And we saw what happened to the great city of Newark. You're doing the same thing in Bellevue. So I beg you to think again what you're doing. And as far as Councilmember Robel, you know, these 2,000 units, he writes a letter to the paper absolutely denying the 2,000 units. The township council has not approved or proposed a 2,000-unit housing product suggested by a state monitor and others. Well, as Jeff said, it's absolutely true. So either Robel, maybe you're making a mistake, or you didn't read the report.
Can I refer to the attorney?
Well, I'm referring-
Refer.
That's the attorney.
Here's the report by Darlene Green. I don't know if he's a pre-attorney.
You're not every planning board in every zone you were meeting. You know better, Ben. There's nothing from the planning board that's on the board sitting in front of us.
It most certainly is. The plan the board approved evidently domain. And Mr. Kennedy was at that meeting. The minute they voted for it, then he left the meeting. I believe that was back in October. So don't tell me there's nothing before him. It was act, it's not hypothetical. It was actually done. And here's Darlene Green's report, 2,000 units, on the Finkles side, she actually mentioned their name.
You're talking about the one that got defeated and got passed out?
No, no, no.
It wasn't 4,000?
4,000, what?
No, no, 2,000. 2,000. It's in your own report. Evidently you don't read it. Evidently you don't read it. But you make, write a letter to the editor.
COA is totally different.
So it's either you're uninformed, or you're a liar. One or the other. Because we have the documentation. It's not hypothetical. It's not, I have to ask for Mr. Murphy to prove because I'm-
It's COA. It's COA. It's not a proposal for the planning board. You know that, Ben. Either that, or you don't know what you're talking about. It's not.
No, I'm reading from your documentation.
Okay, go ahead, Ben.
Go ahead, Ben.
All right.
Let's hear from Ken.
So, please, let's not destroy Bellevue anymore than you do. Now, on May 3rd, my wife and I were driving down Bellevue Avenue, a week before the election, and we observed two town trucks, four town DPW workers, and the engineering aide, I guess that's his title, Jerry Perata, putting up signs on someone's law. I went back an hour later and saw the sign, and I called Mr. Tucci's office. His secretary said, "What's her name? Haven't even messaged yet." And I had the specific message. "I want to know why town employees were putting up political signs on town time." He never got back to me to this day. So I want to know who authorized these signs to be made.
I answer that. Warren answered you with a ridiculous question. First of all, it's not a political sign. That's a sign that I authorized, and it's on all the roadways that are going to be improved. That is not a political sign.
Okay.
Okay? End of story.
No, it's not the end of the story. I'll finish the story.
End of story with the sign. You can make up whatever stories you like. That is not a political sign. That's a sign that I authorized, that you will see on every roadway that will be improved. And it has the name of the mayor, the two-at-large councilman, and the ward councilperson who's ward that road is being improved.
Thank you. And that makes it a political sign.
That's it. That's not a political sign.
Number two, you councilpeople have been sitting there for 12 years or more. First of all, the contractor, under CDBJ grant, the contractor is the one that's obligated to put up the signs. This is not the sign that gets put up. It has to say, "Fundified the HUD Housing Development." It has to give the project number. Don't interrupt me, Mr. Tucci. I-
I didn't talk to you, Mr. Van Damme.
Okay, now I'm going to the media. If he wants to, if he wants to answer, he'll answer it.
All right. Well, you all know, it has to be an official sign with the grant number on it, the amount, where it's funded from, CDBJ. The contractor is responsible for putting it up, not the town manager. This has never been done before. And then every council member, including Di Vicenzo, because it's CDBJ, it's federal fund, but it's funded through the county for political purposes. It has Di Vicenzo's name on it, whoever the county executives, and all council members. It's very funny that you put only the councilman of that ward where the street was going on. So this is definitely-
I think Councilman Longo and myself and Councilman Kennedy are on that signs, and we're not up for reelection.
But the ward, I love it. It's got the three-at-large, and then on the bottom, the specific ward, it's got that council person. It should decide when the contractor puts up the obligated sign. It has all the council members on it.
Okay.
So who ordered, and how much did they cost?
I think the town manager just told you who wore it. So he gave you the answer. It's not going to change, and that's it.
Okay. Well, I'm telling you, they're political signs, and to have town employees install-
I don't think it says vote for us. You want to finish up?
The other thing is, during that election, during that week, it was a rainy week, DPW workers worked great. They were struck, they got the, they put up all these signs all over towns, they got the sitting park done and all that, you know. So if you can get all that stuff done-
Thank you.
-go look at home street between Prospect Place and Home Blower Inn. You had three water main breaks over a year ago. The streets, the potholes were filled, the holes were filled improperly.
Thank you.
You go over it, it's bubbling.
Ben, thank you.
You don't want to hear it. You don't want to hear what's going on.
I heard enough. I let you go on for 10 minutes. That's enough.
All right. Well, we've got to stop. This was absolute disgrace what went on here.
Okay.
And the other thing is during the campaign, you had the town attorney and Ritha Kandary, both running a political campaign. The town attorney.
They can do whatever they want when they're off.
No, they can. You better read the New Jersey Ethics Law. They're a violation, and we will pursue it.
Maybe somebody shouldn't go around representing themselves as the mayor either on these projects, such as the bridge.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all. You're finished.
You look at the bridge. The, the, over at the bridge.
Yes. Anthony Savella, 40, Crescent Terrace. I would just like to say that during this election, there were some disparaging things written about this council, and especially my chief. My chief is not the highest-paid chief in the country, not by a long shot. Try Seaside Heights, who makes 225,000 a year, but someone who maybe didn't make the right choices in life and decided to join a civil service organization or a union so that when it comes time to retire, they would have something in their pocket, would feel the need to disparage my chief, who served this town for 40 years and never left it. And I take that to heart, and I didn't like that at all. And also, the state monitor has no business stating whether he cares we built 2,000 units or 4,000 units. His problem, and that board of events problem, is finding out how we're going to build schools in this town. See, that's the problem. We want to throw $60 million into 115-year-old schools, which some people think's a good idea. See, I asked to be on the superintendent's committee, building committee. 25 years I've been a junior carpenter. I've built incinerator plants, I've built high-rises, half of Newark. And I've built schools. Why he would pick a handyman and a cabinet maker is beside me. Maybe that's the reason why. See, don't put, the signs were a great thing. I love seeing those signs, because I'm saying in my head, "Man, this street's a mess. When's it going to be paved?" But I'll tell you what, Bellevue's done a great job of paving our streets. And I'm here 40 years, and the ones who come here are the troublemakers, not the problem solvers. And I will be here every meeting till the day I die to come here and put to all of you questions of problems that can be solved, not troublemaking. That's the problem here, and that's all I saw through this election. This man, who was a civic activist, always had an agenda, and his agenda was to sit in one of those chairs. But it didn't happen, and it'll never happen, okay? Because everyone can see it behind the lines. And the blog that the other guy writes, where the veterans wrote that this council wraps themselves in flags and takes pictures with veterans. This council has done nothing but support veterans since my uncle received the Medal of Honor five years ago. We may be the only town in Essex County that has a Veterans Day parade. As sorry as it is, it's still a Veterans Day parade. Now, the problem is with the Board of Education, who doesn't seem to want to acknowledge that there is a monument in front of that high school. I spent four months as a crossing guard in front of that school. Not one of those children knew that that monument even existed. That's the shame of it. Not here, it's over there. But since these guys decided to sell their souls to the devil, now they're going to come here and talk. They talk trouble. That's all they talk. They have no answers, never had any answers. And as far as water mains, water mains are breaking all over the country. You need to take that up with the Senate, the Congress, and the president, because we need an infrastructure bill. That's the only way water mains are going to be fixed. This council does not have the power to fix those water mains, or this town doesn't have the money to do it. And that's why they're finding lead in every school and everything else everywhere. See, that's what we need, an infrastructure bill to rebuild this country and put people to work. But people like you just want to talk, 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 but nobody has an answer.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Mr. Sir.
Good evening. My name is Harry Higgins. I live in 148 Bratton.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but I just can't hear you.
Do you want me to come up here?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, I hate to break you some again, but regarding the street signs on movement, I'd like to know why four signs were placed within the three-block radius of where I live on Brighton Avenue, when there were no other signs posted in the first ward. This occurred a few days before the election in which I was the first ward candidate. The incumbent candidate's names were clearly printed at the bottom of the signs. Brighton Avenue was repaved beautifully four years ago. There's not a dent, a pothole, whereas other streets in the first ward are riddled of potholes. And I'm just curious why Brighton Avenue received all these signs and there aren't any, any place else.
If I had to guess, it's probably the signs run off of Brighton Avenue.
Exactly.
Then it'd be in favor.
That's where they were placed by the DPW.
And these four signs were placed on Brighton Avenue. No place else in-
It's better to put it at the main thoroughfare than put it inside the street.
Also, the-
It's right on the corner of the Brighton, whatever street's being paved.
Do them photo. Also, somebody put a sign on their front lawn. That was some public property. To me, that kind of hints of political support, doesn't it?
No, ma'am.
We have the photograph of it.
I don't, it doesn't matter.
We're not disputing. If they were placed, if they were placed on a public right-of-way, if they were placed on someone's property, that was without permission, and they would explain to them what the purpose was. It was not a political sign.
That was in, okay, thank you very much for answering that. So they weren't political.
Not at all.
Okay, thank you. All right. Regarding the sitting park, before the election, there was a private contractor, Mr. Savelli was there, he was seen there multiple times, doing work in the sitting park, such as pouring concrete for the sidewalks. Would we ask to issue the work permit? He replied, "They sent me." We asked, "Who sent you?" We refused to answer. We took a couple of photos. Savelli screamed at us, "I'll sue you." And how much did Savelli pay for his construction work on that sitting park, and did it go through the proper bidding procedures?
Some of the work was done with township funds. Most of the work was done with funds that were-
I fundraised $15,000 for that sitting park.
Well, did you pay Savelli for his work?
No, I did not.
Well, then who paid him?
Well, I have no idea. I-
Well, can we find it? Mr. Tucci, could you put that in?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Okay, meantime, you know, the sitting park, signs going up down the street, Mill Street. I hate to bring this up again, but I was going to bring it up the last week, but it was canceled, canceled. The 1839 Star Copper Mill Pedestrian Bridge was being damaged due to gross negligence and lack of supervision. Even though Franklin Manor Housing Developers issued a statement saying they would repair the damage, the brownstones that were needed to replace were missing, and they're still missing. Nobody knows what happened to them. On two occasions, the water main under the bridge broke, and residents from Montgomery Place to Harrison Street were without water, with no notice from the town. Second time it happened, the town could send out road calls. Thank you. Although the DPW came to fix the break, they also knocked out a six-foot section of the brownstones, causing more extensive damage. A massive tree trunk was also thrown into the entrance of the copper mill mine under the bridge. I don't know how many of you have visited it, but there is an entrance to the underground mine right under the bridge. It was flooding. Somebody threw a massive tree trunk in there after the water main that was fixed. According to the site plans for the restricted age housing complex in 2004, which I guess you all read, the planning board did approve the demolition of the old bridge, and a newer bridge was to be built over it. However, the New Jersey DEP rejected this plan, as there are water mains, as we know, and gas pipes- and gas pipes running underneath the old pedestrian bridge. Now we are witnessing the construction of a new bridge right up against the old one because you're not going to be able to get a rent roll until the bridge is built to accommodate the tenants' cars. The constant vibration and tonnage of heavy construction equipment on top of the bridge caused the recent water main breaks, according to the public workers. And Mr. Tucci, I spoke to you about that before, about the construction equipment on there?
Right.
Why were the developers given carte blanche to park their back hose of tractors on the historic bridge? There is still one park there today, right over the water main. There was no previous damage. And some of you don't believe this, but I've lived within walking distance to that bridge all my life. And so has my father, who was born in Bellevue in 1913. So I know about that property. There was no previous damage to this 1839 bridge that was a marvel of construction predating the Civil War. It wasn't until concerned citizens brought this to the attention of the town that the destruction was somewhat halted. The Bellevue Council passed a bond ordinance, for those of you who were on the council back then, maybe not all of you, in 2010 for $77,000 to repair a bridge. It wasn't clear whether they were referring to the historic pedestrian bridge or the motor bridge closer to the senior citizen center. I guess you know there's two bridges there, not one bridge. So which bridge is it the $77,000 was marked for?
We'd have to look it up. I, I, I don't have that in the top of my head.
Mr. Romell, I think you were quoted about this in the Annabelle Times, which bridge were you referring to, the $77,000? Is that the old?
I wasn't quoted on, on that particular refer.
Okay, well.
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't be quoted and I was quoted about that. What I am quoting, tell me what I was quoted about.
At the $77,000, there was an ordinance and that will be put toward the renovation of a bridge.
When year was it? In 2010.
In 2010? So which bridge was it? Was it the brownstone bridge? So you didn't read the site plans? Thank you.
I have Mr. Tucci.
All right, okay, regardless of whether it was the motor bridge, well, the motor bridge or the old bridge, what happened to the $77,000 since 2010? What happened to it? Don't ask Mr. Tucci because he wasn't here then.
Well, he could find out though.
We can research it for us.
Yeah, well, what happened to it? You don't know, that's a big chunk of change. So you don't have an answer for that right now, Mr. Tucci?
I don't have an answer. We don't have an answer for you right now, though.
Okay, one last thing.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. Why was the Copper Mill Bridge ever memorialized because it's a dark landmark? Because then he wouldn't have had to take out bond ordinance.
Did you say why wasn't?
It wasn't memorialized as a landmark because there's a lot of state funding, funding, federal funding that could have come into preserving. He wouldn't have had to find this money otherwise, the missing $77,000. It should be memorialized. Why wasn't it ever done?
Because it wasn't. That's what I'm going to tell you.
But why not? You know, somebody said that.
Because whoever was on the historical society, the board didn't do it.
Well, the gentleman back there said that we have no answers.
Is he the gentleman?
I mean, I'm asking the question. Why wasn't it done? Who's on that historical preservation meeting?
In 2010.
Mr. Conspirelli, you know why it wasn't done?
Nope.
You don't know why it wasn't done? Was anything?
We are doing, we are doing. We already did three properties. We're doing it.
Did you, how about the Old Dutch Church? Was that memorialized?
That was done.
It was? Memorialized?
It was.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it. And you will get those answers soon.
No, sorry. I can't, I'm sorry, but I can only let you speak once.
No problem.
Now, I'm thanking everybody.
No, I'm talking.
Oh, thank you.
Anne Marie Cruzneck, 126 Academy Street. I've lived on Academy my whole life, before that my dad, before that my grandma. We had been having, we had the church move in, which I have no problem with the church. That's not my issue. My issue is the traffic. At first it was the cars, then it's the delivery trucks, then it's their buses and their limos and their school buses and their construction vehicles. Now, I don't know anybody if you know what Academy looks like, but it's a narrow one-way from Hornblower to Washington Avenue. Sundays are a bloody nightmare. They take over the street from corner to corner, regardless of people's driveways, regardless of fire hydrants, regardless of handicap parking, regardless of the stop sign. They park out to their noses or in the tip of Washington Avenue. They take over all of Valley National Parking and they've now started taking over the middle school. Because the middle school doesn't have a fence on it, you see. So when they go through Valley National and find no parking, they get out into Van Houten, make the turn onto High, and boom, there's a whole parking lot. When they leave, it's like a mass exodus. You can't get out of your house on a Sunday afternoon. Either you can't get out of your driveway because it's blocked by a car, or if God forbid, you park on the street, you're losing that spot because there's four cars waiting to take it. This is every weekend and God forbid, there's a holiday during the week. Then we get the town coming around, posting emergency, no parking. So now we can't even park on our own street where we pay taxes and they don't. And we have to go find parking on Hornblower or Van Houten or Washington Avenue. This is getting out of hand. We call the police, they don't come. If they do come, they want to know, well, what do you want me to do about it? I want you to write a ticket, do something. Let them know, Academy, we can't put up with it anymore. I have pictures that I can give you that you can pass around and look at. But this is what goes on every weekend and sometimes during the week. And it's, it's just not fair.
I, I just went down Academy Street yesterday because I did hear that there were some traffic jams and blockups. And it is narrow, especially with cars parked on both sides of the street. I also checked with the police department and the fire department to see if there were any incident reports of anything that happened. What I would suggest you do, and I spoke to the deputy chief, and he's going to be sending a car through on a regular basis, but if, when you have this, call them. Call them, they're on, they're on high alert. I, I was made aware of this, this week, okay? So I mean, so we, we sat down, I'm sure you have, and that's not a good thing, I agree with you. But I did go down there, it is narrow with the cars parked on both sides. And if there is a bus there, traffic is going to pack up.
The big two buses. Last Sunday, they had a wedding. I had two, I don't know what they're called, the super stretch escalades, two of them, Rolls Royce. And then we had the coach bus bringing the boys back from their pub scavenger.
Well, please, call, when that happens, call, the cops will respond.
I used to call, I got tired of it, to be honest with you. The city won't come.
Do me a favor, please, call again, they're on high alert, they're aware of it, they're paying attention.
Get the officer's name you spoke to when you moved.
Sure.
Okay?
I will. Thank you.
Mario Stras, 95 Bell Street. A question on Resolution 6 and 7. I assume that's a typo. You're both saying to extend the 20s.
Is that a temporary budget?
Yeah, it looks like it's temporary. No, it's not.
No. There's two, there's two separate ones, two temporary.
Let me just ask you a simple question. Based on last year's budget in 2015, May 24, 2015, where are we today? What percentage are you, is it, what percentage are you spending today as compared to last year? Are you even or slightly higher?
I believe we're slightly lower.
Slightly lower.
Where we were last year. I don't have an exact number, I can't get that, but by law, the temp budget, you can only appropriate a certain percentage each time. That's why there's two on there.
Right, but it's two different budgets.
Yes.
Okay, that's number one. Number two, this question I have to ask. The housing that is being developed with the senior citizen center is, is that senior or 55 over? I keep hearing two different stories.
Atria's 5 and over.
Eight, what is called eight, what is eight?
55 and over.
55?
And older.
All right, so that's 55 and older.
55 and older, moderate and above.
Okay, so then also on the same, what is, what age is considered senior housing?
62.
All right, no, the only reason I'm, because I have a recording of my, during the election, it said here, we now have senior housing for seniors. And so now, that's the only reason I'm questioning it. Do we have senior housing or not? Because the tape recording, which I have on my phone now, says we now have senior housing for Bellevue.
It's not a complaint against them.
I'm not sarcastic about it. I just don't like the public, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Rosina Copeland from 24th Avenue, 7th. All that has gone on, they will be very, very nice and gentle to come, open agreement and then bring it up the Beltway. Clean up. Which district is being cleaned up, talking about? They move the little by little machine and stuff, and I am very proud. I still, it's a lot of work to, to do. Also, I have a little problem that I live over there with the grass. When I cut the grass and I pull the grass out, the part of the work is going to be problematic to draw. If I don't pull, it just breaks down. Oh, they go run, they go run. It stays over there for two, three, four days and the grass doesn't actually get dry. I can stop power, first I call them. I have this thing over here, which day you want me to pull out? Which day you going to come back? Oh, Miss, you have to call all the time. If I don't pull, you don't pick it up. Now, what's the problem?
Whatever the calendar says for the, the pickup. Whatever your calendar says that they're going to pick up that, on that area.
But they don't do it. I have to keep paying full, and I'm sick and tired.
Well, then I suggest that you call, not the manager, call the, and it's on a calendar, it's the public worsty point.
But they give them the day to put it out, if they never show up.
Can I make a suggestion? Mr. Gilbert's here with us this evening. He's listening, I mean.
Okay, well, you're going to pick yours up?
I want to monitor that for us and make sure that everybody gets it picked up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Romell.
That's all I have to say.
Bill Milton, I'd like to know why weren't the newspapers informed about the police officer's latest charge of shoplifting back in January?
No discussion then.
Excuse me?
No discussion.
I can't discuss that. I see a hide in that camera.
George Yantley. There's a resolution number 15 concerning the affirmation of the civil rights policy. What is that?
That, that's a resolution that we have to, that we have to pass annually, all right? It's a requirement of the joint insurance fund to make sure that we're following all the proper procedures and we're treating everyone the same.
Thank you. I'd also like to congratulate each and every one of you that have been reelected. Hopefully, we'll be able to move forward and continue to make progress. I commend Mr. Tucci for the sustainability that he's looking at. There's also a complaint on Portland Street, right across from the new park that we just had the ribbon cutting ceremony. I have pictures on my phone where the trucks are actually backing up into those metal barricades that you have. So one piling is actually bent. You can also see marks on the sidewalk where there's tire marks for them going across the sidewalk. There's obviously no parking on that side of the street at all for the entire block, length of the block. But what's happening with the residents that live there that they're having problems finding parking? Because the employees from the plant are parking, there's parking available like on the sidewalk there, they don't utilize that at all, which is for that particular development. So it's difficult since there's already no parking on one side and there are various strategic spots on the opposite side near the plant in between the bays, but there's also no parking. So it's very, very tight in terms of the, the residents that live on that block. Also, previously I had spoken to Mr. Esposito. There's still no fence around that park. And that would be a concern. There's money there, I believe, for that. And it was suggested that one be put up for security reasons. There are other fences back there that are, that are shared by the property on Stevens Street, but many of them are dilapidated, worn. If somebody goes back there, or children, or animals, someone can get injured or hurt. So that may be a liability, I don't know, to the municipality. So I would think that if we could cordon that off and secure that, that would be better. As far as the signs and the roads, sign, no sign, it's good to see that the roads are being repaired, especially those of us that have older vehicles. And it's much nicer and gentler on our booties. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Frank Fleishman, 132 Franklin Street. First of all, I want to congratulate the incumbents for getting back in. I see, according to the paper, that you're all humbled by the return to, to, to your seats and I hope you keep that humility for the next four years. Going to bring, bring up something old for once because we've heard a lot tonight. Resolution number 21, Resolution authorizing the advertisement of bids for roof replacement and masonry maintenance at the Silver Lake Firehouse. This is just happening now? I thought this happened a couple of months ago. I know that government contracting is not a best thing, but this seems to be going on for quite some time. Number 21.
What's on the firehouse? For roof information.
I believe what we approved last time was for the architect to draw up the plans.
Okay, that's done?
And the specifications.
Yes.
That's done. This is actually the advertising to go out to bid.
Okay, that's fine. Now that the election is over, I'm wondering, Mr. Tucci, if you would, if you would be interested in entertaining my request for a tour of the firehouse?
Once it's safe, I'd be happy to bring you on a tour.
Okay, I would love to have that happen sometime this summer.
As soon as it's safe, as soon as it's safe and it's Fleishman, I will call you and we'll take a tour of it here.
And if I remember correctly, you quoted the, the total cost roughly on the high end of about 3...
312.
312? Okay. Well, now we know how much it's going to cost.
It's an estimate.
Okay, all right, it's an estimate, I understand. Okay, now that we have an estimate, I'm wondering if I can have a public commitment from all of you that this is going to become a firehouse again?
We went through this, I think we all committed to a firehouse.
We all committed last time, the last evening we had.
Okay. All right. Well, I appreciate that, I hope you keep that commitment. Thank you.
Colonel Fleishman, 132 Franklin Street. I'm not as nice as my husband. I'm really not. Okay, again. Yeah, I was going to say, go ahead. All right, first of all, again, I keep banging the drum, the firehouse, we know, it's a process, blah, 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 actions speak louder than words, yada, yada, yada. Okay? Now, first of all, the grass needs to be cut again. I'm sick and tired of going back into the backyard, seeing it, you know, needs to be maintained. If this is going to be an active firehouse again and you're taking care of all the other firehouses in this town, why isn't this one being taken care of? When, during the election, when we had to go down to the Friendly House and the Friendly House, I'm sorry, stunk to high heaven with very foul odors. Okay, that needs to be addressed. Okay?
Okay? Yeah, very foul odors.
Well, we had lots of people there, and no one complained that voted there.
Well, then I'm complaining.
Well, I guess.
Then, then let me be the only one who complains, that's fine. I'm complaining, do something about it. You had that hideous-looking sign on the closed firehouse. Can you be more tacky? A handwritten sign that we have go down to the Friendly House, with all these signs that this town can make, you couldn't have made a proper sign? That was shameful. So, like I said, he believes, you guys, they're gonna be doing this firehouse? I don't. I wanna be wrong, but I know I'm not gonna be wrong. If you're humbled by the reelection, show it. Do what we're asking you to do. Reopen the firehouse. Do something, please.
Turn of motion, pause, public care.
Seconds.
Senator Father Aliens, Kennedy, Longo. Nattari.
Yes.
Rodell.
Yes.
Shumover.
Yes.
Turn of motion, move if you stand agenda.
Exactly.
Any legislation steps?
Uh, twenty-one.
Four forty-three, counsel. John Yurey.
Twenty-one, yeah, the one.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
I have one also on there.
Yes, just, there's, there's.
One hundred and twenty-one and twenty-two.
There's one bill that Joe wants to pull.
One, twenty-one, twenty-three, yeah, firehouse.
Could you go along? Quick on the roll, on the conservative.
Senator Father Aliens, Kennedy.
Yes.
Longo.
Take the walk.
Joe, you could take the, huh?
Nattari.
Yes.
Rodell.
Yes.
Shumover.
Yes.
Move, move Resolution twenty-one.
Second.
Okay, I would like to say something on that. We haven't gone through this with the Silver Lake Firehouse time and time again. Okay? We did go out for bids. We are going out for bids. I did get everyone's okay. Everyone said they were for, for doing it. What else can we do? Okay?
We've got to do it.
Well, uh, one, two, three, four. Yes, go ahead.
We could move to get the final plans for the entire project.
We have the plans.
We've done.
Not for the whole thing. It really doesn't matter. We are going to do it. I, I don't know what the, the problem is. Well, I wish you would just try to do it like you do.
It matters to me. I'm sorry, I don't mean to be the squeaky wheel, but I don't understand why we cannot make the plans for everything, even if we don't start bidding it out. At least, you know, there was a lot of time that went by getting these things together so that we could get the process. You know, so now here we are, June.
I think we wanna, I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt.
My, my only point is, I don't understand why we can't, uh, move forward on those parts of the project, and then, as we're getting.
I think, I think I answered this question once before.
You've answered it a hundred times. The engineer.
Right. I'm gonna answer it again, okay? Doing it in phases, all right?